After you, sir. I would like to call to order the Monday, November 7th, 2016 Instructional Work Group of the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education. And the first item on the agenda is public appearances. We have one public appearance, Chris Gomez Schmidt. And Chris, you know, three minutes, so let me know when to start the timer. And we hope it doesn't break again. And the green light on.
All right. Hi, everybody. I am not here to talk to you about advanced learning today. I am here to talk to you about the middle school redesign discussion. And so I am very excited about this because I feel like a lot of people in our district feel as though middle school is sort of this, I guess, a box kids enter in sixth grade and come out at eighth grade and nobody really knows what happens in the middle of it. And so I'm excited to see some attention being paid to this area. I think it's really important and really important for bolstering the student achievement that we're expecting to see in the high schools at all levels. I guess one of the things that I'm concerned about is the family engagement piece of this. I know there have been a lot of problems around the pathways communication and that is just questions and families not quite understanding what's happening at the high school level with that redesign. And there's a lot of meetings going on in November. I'm expecting huge improvement in that way. But I'm hoping that we don't go back and repeat the same mistake with the middle school. The timeline for the middle school redesign is really tight. The focus groups are going to be happening in November and the recommendations and budget implications to the board, I think, are coming in December. And I think the final product in May. What I'm just going to ask is that there is a chance for families, teachers, students, staff at the middle schools to be genuinely engaged in this. And at all 11 middle schools, because we know that the middle schools are really different from one another. And what I think about this is, at the district level, we spend a lot of time engaging families around their particular interest area where their student fits in. So if you do an ELL plan or if you do a special education plan, and parents kind of figure out where their student fits. But every student fits who's in middle school into a middle school redesign. And so I really see it as an opportunity to have parents at these schools come together as one and sort of create some crosswalks between expectations of what different groups of students need. And I think it's a really good opportunity to get a lot more parent engagement in an area where parents aren't very engaged, which is at the middle school level. So I thank you for your attention to that and I look forward to the discussion. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Chris. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes dated October 10th, 2016. I move that we approve those minutes. Maya?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes, opposed? That passes seven, nothing. And we move on to the major item on our agenda tonight, which is the middle school model. And I believe Alex and Lisa, and I don't know who else, and Jen, if you want to introduce? Yeah.
All right, thank you, TJ. Yep, we're going to be joined by Alex Freeland and Lisa Quistad tonight. Our goal is to mainly give you an overview of the project and the project plan. Why we think we need to do the project, what we think that project entails and how we're going to go about executing on it. I'd like for you to think about this as the development of a kind of like a plan for the plan, as opposed to the creation of some big plan itself. We're just trying to learn as much as we can about what's happening at middle school, really study it, understand the implications, and then from there, figure out our path forward. So, yeah, we're kind of beginning a journey to learn as much as we can this year. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Alex to walk you through it.
Actually, Jen, I just want to take the chair's prerogative and I just want to underscore what you said about a plan to be a plan, because I think that, especially in the context of pathways, as Chris mentioned, and more generally, that clarity around that, that this is step one. And that this step one has 15 sub-steps in it, but it's not anyone's expectation that a complete redesign of middle schools will be in place by 2018 or perhaps even 2019.
That's right.
And so, and I think that it's really important that we communicate that consistently.
I think that's right.
So I just wanted to underscore that before you started.
Yeah.
And I was glad you said it, so.
Thank you, TJ. Yeah, we don't, we don't know what will come out of this initial foray, right? It could be small changes, it could be big changes, it could be somewhere in between. We don't actually know, we're just genuinely entering into this inquiry phase and looking forward to seeing what comes out of it. So thank you for that, TJ, and thank you for the emphasis. I'll go ahead and pass it over to Alex.
Yeah, great, thank you. And thank you also, Chris, for your highlighting the importance of engagement and looking forward to getting feedback on how we do that even in this process. Twenty-one years having a touch point with middle schools. I've always been excited about pathways. I'm equally excited about this journey to explore what our middle schools could be in the future. So as you know, the senior leadership team has been kind of zeroing on middle school performance for the last year, given somewhat flat and uneven results. Our goal tonight is to provide the board a review, an overview of our plan to learn as much as possible about the middle school experiences, both the strengths and challenges, as well as best practices across the country that effectively prepare students for high school and beyond. Very similar to the high schools that work research that came out in 1990s, we're learning more and more about how adolescents best learn with an emphasis on creating schools that foster strong relationships with intellectually rigorous and relevant environments. So building off the foundational school improvement efforts over the last three years, it's our goal to explore research-based school and district improvement strategies that would bring our middle school practices into the 21st century, as well as align with our high school pathway systems. Some of that foundational work and accomplishments include establishing stronger PBS and restorative systems, implementing a new math curriculum, which by the way is actually influencing practices in other core content classes. Our middle school intensive professional development, which our teachers and our coaches are thoroughly enjoying and leveraging, and their improvement efforts, and our implementation of academic and career planning, now in two full grades. As well as a host of new principals at middle school level who are bringing lots of exciting energy to our middle school experience. It's important to consider these strengths and accomplishments as we discuss the rationale for this project plan this evening. So if you remember, we learned during Jen's entry plan in 2013, as well as the high school coursework review in 2014, that students, families, and staff were in consensus about the need to develop skills that go beyond mastery of content knowledge, and expressed the need to rethink the learning conditions and experiences for secondary students so that the MSD, MSD diploma has deep meaning and value. As you know, over 2,400 members of our community engage in a year-long visioning process that identify these key skills, knowledge, and dispositions, which will serve as our North Star. We are excited to leverage this compelling graduate vision to assess our current practices to determine what is both promoting and potentially hindering our students' growth towards college, career, and community readiness. We currently know that there is inconsistency across and within our middle school curriculum, expectations, and learning experiences. This was a significant finding during a high school coursework review that was initially focused on high schools. But during the focus groups, where we engaged students and teachers and parents, the inconsistency required us to actually look deeper and look specifically at middle school and middle school transitions. So I'm not sure if you remember this particular slide from that presentation in November 2014, not only did we find significantly different expectations for things like homework, collaborative learning, and start times, we found disparities in expectations for grading in middle schools and high schools. Upon disaggregating this data, we find that students of color had an average GPA three times lower than their white peers. To address this, we put in place this year clearer parameters on grading practices across all of our secondary schools. We're also excited about the middle school report card project, which will run parallel to this project so they're not happening at different times and learning from each other. Certainly not a silver bullet, but a step in the right direction in showing that we actually have consistent and equitable grading practices. These next two slides are two data sets that our transition team has been looking at considering the strengths and gaps of our transitions from elementary to middle and middle to high. Although the suspensions are declining in ninth grade compared to eighth grade, which we would attribute to our emerging practices with restorative practices and PBS at high schools, the difference between some of our student groups is clear that there are too many students having vastly different experiences as they transition from elementary to middle school, particularly for our African-American students. As you can see here for attendance, as students transition from middle school and to high school, the differences in rates for attendance, 2% decline transitioning from elementary to middle and close to 4% from middle to high. We want to create an environment where every kid and their family, of course, doesn't want to miss school any part of the school year. However, this data requires us that we investigate what school and district practices are contributing to these outcomes as we consider any district-wide change effort. So as mentioned before, really excited about the middle school intensive professional development session. I was, I happened to engage all of our middle schools, those who participated in the opening professional development session, that we've commissioned this year through the incredible work of the CNI team, Cindy and her team. The text that they provided to our middle school teachers and coaches, "The Power of the Adolescent Brain" really helps us to understand what are the current needs of our adolescent learners as it relates to the schools that we create. This text has affirmed both our graduate profile and our need to align our middle school experience with our pathway systems. During our first cross-functional team, which was just last week, which was facilitated by Anne Marie, one of our school improvement partners, we used this framework to begin to identify current practices that our adolescent learners have access to that both support and also serve as an obstacle to their development. Just a couple of examples from the items listed here. We identified the worldwide experiences that currently take place at Badger Rock and Spring Harbor, the self-awareness activities is reflective of academic and career planning processes, the peer learning connections, which would be reflected in the small learning communities of pathways, as well as the average strategies, which is also included to the metacognition strategies, the average requires students to think more rigorously and demonstrate that thinking through their writing. And of course, opportunities for choice, which we see as not as consistent in our classroom practices across secondary, but we believe that pathways will also create more choice for students in the future.
And just to add to what Alex has said, we worked really hard, Cindy and her team worked really hard to prepare content and present the professional development for our intensive needs elementary schools. And because that was so well received and teachers really took that back and it made a difference in their classroom, Cindy and her team developed a plan for middle schools that actually more of our middle schools wanted to opt into. So to reaffirm what Alex said, that's been a really positive thing for our middle school teachers. I also wanted to say that Sylvia and her team in OMGE have worked really hard to sort of put some guidance and detail around access to world language out there and has had really great conversations with principals around expanding that access. And Lori Felons is also working with principals to take a look at different kinds of access to visual arts and music in the middle schools, too. So some good work happening across the teaching and learning organizations. More to do, but good starts.
I think Ed has a question.
Yeah, can you tell me what affective learning is?
So example would be mindfulness. To the degree that kids are asked to think about who they are, how they interact with their environment, as it relates to how it strengthens the skills for them to be greater thinkers and doers. Does that make sense? I don't have a textbook definition for you, but.
Yeah, it's more about how you relate to other students, interpersonal skills, something like that bucket of non-cognitive skills.
Okay, they're highly reflecting our graduate profiles.
Metacognitive strategies, that's like thinking about thinking.
Thinking about, yes. And thinking about how you learn, yes.
And you've been really talking with great joy about the intensive middle school professional development. Can you talk about a little bit about how it's being delivered and what context is it being done? Is it release time? Is it PD days? Is it, and who's participating in things like that, if you can expand on that?
So Cindy Green and her team are really basing the professional development on the text that's being used, "The Power of the Adolescent Brain." And it is sub-release time. It is actually one of the very few places, we put that resources, resource out there because we knew that it was important for teachers to get together with their like colleagues, grade levels, and teams to do the work together. So it was one of the places where we invested in that during the day. So it's not extended contract, it's not Saturdays, it is actually during, regularly scheduled during the school day, and their schools are planning for that.
Yeah, I would say a key difference in this professional development opportunity, outside of the learning that people do together at a central location, is the lab sites. So coupled with the learning that they do together facilitated by CNI, the teams are actually going to visit teachers, actually implement the lesson plans that they've designed based on this new learning. And through a protocol, they're understanding what are those teaching practices that are actually having impact to further improve their planning. So I think that's the most exciting thing. And those have just gotten off the ground in the last couple of weeks. My first one is going to be right on Wednesday. So we're excited about this. We saw tremendous results at elementary and we're looking forward to seeing the same at middle school this year.
And can you just quickly clarify who from each of the intensive support middle schools are attending?
Yeah.
I think that was one of TJ's questions.
From sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, from our intensive schools, as well as the coaches. Some principals attended at least one of the sessions. So that's, that's the who.
And about how many total, district-wide?
I would say I open for all three sessions. There are about 20 in each session, so I'd say about 60, 16, 80 staff members.
I'm trying to gauge the size of the project.
And, you know, and I assume it's kind of a, in some sense, a train the trainer model or bring back to your home school kind of thing.
Yeah, that's the critical piece of it, was the lab. Actually, the in-school planning days that happen. So literacy staff will go into a school, plan and work with school-based coaches on what they want to work on, what they want to see modeled in a classroom, and then how they want to talk about and reflect about that. That's actually the coolest part of this, I think, are those lab days, because schools have a bit of a sense of local control based on their own context about that as well.
Thanks.
I think we should move on, because I think up until this point, we were trying to make the argument for why to take on this project and what we're currently doing. But our question is, is just doing this curriculum instruction work enough?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. Yes, yeah. And, you know, upon my arrival here, not too many people were asking me with great enthusiasm, like, what are we going to do for high schools tomorrow? Because we had that reflected in the strategic framework. But middle schools, principals, teachers, central office staff, were very much in this place of saying, like, what are we going to do? Like, we need to do something. So very much to kind of Chris's acknowledgement of parents wanting to really kind of figure out to what degree are, what's happening in middle schools, given the results. And so we're using these kind of four frames to consider what's contributing to some of the inconsistencies that we know exist. And we'll be analyzing our best practices also through these four frames, including what is excellent and working in our schools, and trying to find those things that are systematically broken, to ensure, we're asking ourselves, to what degree is curriculum instruction, our scheduling practices, our school structures, and even our district practices and policies serving as both accelerants for student achievement and those that are also serving as barriers for adolescents being their fully-developed selves. So these next few slides are just kind of walking through the, kind of the project plan and the timeline. Phases one and two outlines kind of a deep exploration of our current state, as well as conducting a literature review of best practices, which is currently underway. I know that slide may read like it's already complete, but it's actually currently in progress. We've already begun conducting student focus groups and established a cross-functional team, which will serve as both an advisory committee, that will review, vet key findings, and help us make recommendations. You can see the cross-functional team, which we thought was going to be relatively small, has grown to be this size, but I think it's only to ensure that we are valuing the diversity of perspectives and functions from across our district, including parents. There are two groups, two very important groups, our students and our community-based organizations that also play a role in supporting our kids before and after school programming, that we plan to engage in a process when we begin developing recommendations, so we actually have their feedback in the process. Our Phase Two is deeply, is to deeply understand each of our stakeholders' experiences qualitatively. It would have been our goal to engage each stakeholder group at each school, but capacity was, capacity was limited. Each principal nominated diverse group of two to three parents per school, and we'll potentially engage teachers from the balance of the schools as we get feedback about emerging During Phases Three through Five, the cross-functional team will review key findings about best practices, as well as our district practices, focused on those four frames, curriculum instruction, school structures, scheduling, and district systems, to draft the recommendations and determine if there are any budget implications. Not to determine what the budget will be, but just to better understand what the implications would be for the budget, based on those recommendations. We then plan to engage a variety of stakeholders in a series of meetings to gather feedback about those recommendations, even before bringing those to the board in March. And this is the timeline in a truncated version. We look forward to hearing from the board, both about your feedback and your direction moving, moving forward.
All right, thank you. Anna, did you just? Yeah, go ahead. Plenty of time.
Going back to 13, can you talk a little bit about the schools you picked for the parental focus group? What were, what were the reasons why those two schools were selected? You have O'Keefe and Hamilton.
Oh, so good question. So those, they're just situated geographically in areas that we thought parents would easily do. It's not, we're not just talking to parents at that school, we're inviting parents from all the schools on the east side to convene at O'Keefe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry if that wasn't clear.
I was a little confused, because I was.
Converge on the east side at O'Keefe, correct.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was just around the student focus groups, kind of how you were putting those together and selecting students.
Yeah, so we work with the principals to create a diverse group of students, included all aspects of our students, from students with disabilities, English language learners, our advanced learners, our students in the middle, racial makeup, from each of those schools to represent student voice. We think, as you're going to see, there's only about a few schools there. We think in the next phase, once we actually have recommendations, is going to the balance of those schools and also engaging students in what we've learned as far as recommendations to get their feedback.
Just one recommendation, it might be helpful for the student focus group to pull in some students from the alternative education, whether it's school-based alternatives or NEON, because they might have some good insights since those are students who weren't successful in the middle schools.
Great, thank you. Dan?
Thanks. On the number six, the key finding in the coursework, is there anything to learn from this chart? It's the key finding in high school coursework study.
Around the misalignment?
Well, yeah, is there, you know, from one school doesn't, does reasonably okay, another does reasonably not good at all, is there anything to learn from these schools, from these results?
Yeah, I think, I think there's, there's more to learn. I think when we received this data, I mean, we understood that there were different expectations according to what students told us. Simple things like homework, collaborative learning opportunities. I think just expectations overall, as far as what an A means and the, the number of assignments per quarter that yield a grade. So I think what we learned is that the inconsistencies in those experiences, both within and across schools, that was clear at high school. I think this is just requiring us to ask more questions, which is what we'll learn in this, in this next phase.
Did you look at, instead of percentage of students, at least one D or F, did you just look at F? Did that make, do you know if you looked at it?
I believe we looked at Ds and Fs, but we actually do have current data just on Fs.
I wondered, you know, I got a couple Ps, because I didn't care. I didn't flunk it.
Yeah.
But did you look at, did you divide them out? Would it, would it, do you, do you know if it would matter that much if you took the Ds out and just showed, you look at how many flunked something?
My hunch is no, but I think we can definitely explore that. We currently had that data just on Fs.
I'm just curious if they would skew that percentage.
If you took the Ds out.
By how much? I mean, you know, one school at 79%, if you took the Ds out, what would you get?
And I want to just clarify, too, that usually, and I assume that's the same way when we have reporting of grades, that it's in any reporting period, which means that it might not be the final grade, that it could be one of the quarterly grades that was a D or an F, and the student may have passed the course with a C in the end. So that just, you know, it's, and I assume that this is like that, almost, when we have grades reported.
And also not suggesting that this is because of instruction. It's my own experience, I didn't care about that class, honestly, when I was a kid, just blew it off. So, I mean, you had that going on, too, and that's hard to deal with. That was hard to deal with at that moment. But I'm just curious, that some of these numbers are, anything over 50% is, well, is not good, anything even, I mean, none of this is good, but anything over 50% is pretty low.
Can I say something on that? When we originally looked at this data with the board, whenever that was, we had a big discussion about rigor and challenge in the classroom, I think you may remember that. And that has, I mean, that led to all of our actions around shoring up the literacy content, the mathematics content, most recently how we are grading practices. So it's led to some actions that we think will support, you know, our students in being more successful in the transition from eighth to ninth grade. But now we're asking ourselves a new set of deeper questions, because, I mean, our actions have only been over the last couple of years and we're not seeing a big difference yet on, on GPA. So I think we just were wanting to dig deeper. Is there more to this? I mean, is it, is it also about relevance or lack thereof, of the, of the coursework that students are taking, for example?
If I'm mistaken, we did see a reduction in the ninth grade eligible results.
Ninth grade.
Because we took, we paid attention to it.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
And we did see that go down, still, still too many.
It's progress.
Aren't making it.
Yeah.
So I just, I don't know, within, since then to now, if there's any. So I just, I don't know, within, since then to now, if there's anything we can learn from this?
Yeah.
About what they're, how they're doing, what they do, it's, it's...
Agreed.
I think we will learn a number of things this year, a few things. But with, particularly with this intensive profession development, that we believe is actually going to impact teacher practice. The parameters that we established for secondary teachers around grading practices, that we think was actually contributing to some of these, some of these results and the disparities, interrelated disparities. So, I mean, we'll, we'll need to ask, you know, is that enough, depending on what we learned this year? Which is why we want to learn, really to explore other conditions along those four frames that would help us consider what are the other options.
Michael, and then Mary.
So, same slide as being, the same concerns came up. This slide really brings into picture the discussion that I had earlier at home. You know, we're looking at our middle schoolers' grades, but the reality that came up is that the challenge that happens in middle school changes when you enter high school. So as a parent, I'm looking at how I can shore up the, the gaps that are going to happen. So I mean, the positives that I look here at Hamilton and Spring Harbor, they, they moved up. So I think we really need to dig into, into, into what they did to really shore up. But the other aspect is the emphasis in parents, caretakers, and really emphasize, bring that focus to the student, that this is eighth grade, that whatever they're lacking here, it's going to create that broader gap in high school. And the thing that I notice as, as a parent, in middle school, our kids start pulling away, trying to be more independent. So, so we really need to pull them back here, reinforce the positive learning that they, they are having, and really get them the resources that they need to come out of middle school with better grades, uh, grades and better, empowered in, in their educational standing, and utilize ninth grade as an introduction and a catch-all for, for the kids that we might have missed in middle school, and really connect them, educate the caretakers, the parents, and everybody that surrounds them to, to the resources that they are, they are going to need for, let's say math. You know, they needed extra assistance in their, in their math. They, they pulled an F, they pulled a D. So, so we really have to emphasize and make it almost seamless, not such a big gap, but not reducing the, the challenges of ninth grade, but instead making a stepping stone from eighth grade that really, I don't know, identifies that drop-off that is going to happen, you know, dropping percentages in, from eighth to, to ninth grade. You know, it's, it hurts students who has an F and a D, and they hate seeing that happen, so. But it's reality, I mean, we had this conversation at home, even my daughter brought it up, the high schooler brought it up to the middle, middle schoolers, you know, so.
Mary?
Agreed.
Do you consider culture, as the culture that is in our middle schools, as part of this?
Yes.
And how do you do that?
So I think what, I think what we'll learn in the focus groups, tied to what we're learning through our culture and climate results, is kids talking to us, as well as teachers, about the conditions in the school that are affirming them, and that are getting in the way. You know, I, I can tell you, the first time we got our culture and climate results, I actually sat with the Sherman table, the first time we got the results. And the, the, the topic of bullying, of course, came up. And they had already done kind of this three-month review, but with students, about why they thought bullying was impacting their school. It was the kids that told them clearly, oh yeah, bullying happening is here, it's happening in these three areas. It's happening in the lunchroom, it's happening in these two bathrooms, and it's happening on this corner after school. And so based on that, they actually came up with a plan that involved students in thinking about how can we reduce, reduce bullying. I, I think kids have a lot to offer, how a school articulates its culture, to what degree kids are expected and demanded to meet certain tasks, but they're also supported with emotional structures and supports through our social, social learning standards, and a host of others, that when a collective, when, when adults collectively determine what those conditions will be, students will meet those expectations. To me, that's all part of culture. And I think we'll, we'll learn some things, I, I wonder how much we'll learn that's new in the focus groups, both for students particularly, but also amongst teachers and parents, to figure out what are the strengths, what are the things that are actually supporting students grow, even for, for struggling students, and the things that are actually getting in the way. And we think they show up potentially in our scheduling practices, and some of the school structures. I think with curriculum instruction, we've done a relatively good job over these last couple of years, developing more coherent instructional scopes for teachers to leverage collectively. But yes, I, I do believe culture, and you'll see that reflected in, you have the text in front of you, but you see it reflected in those dispositions that teachers are exploring during their, during their professional development.
I, I think that would be, my question is whether it's explicit enough, that that's, that what we, one of the outcomes is how we specifically address culture, to have the thriving environment where every student is engaged, where, that it is a culture of, of thriving and learning. And I think particularly at this age, the, the external pressures are enough that, that, that culture plays a really large role in how, whether students, how engaged they are. And I just wonder if it's, I, I think all of this is, is great work, and I was asking myself, does it fall under structures, systems, whatever? But I don't think it's specifically really called out, and it's probably one of the more powerful determinants of, of whether our students are feeling that sense of belonging and feeling the, that what's around there, the ecosystem, is about thriving and excelling.
Yeah. I do believe the, the, the culture is reflected in every, every, every aspect of those.
Yeah.
But I, I, I do hear and agree that the need to make it more explicit in our goal to better understand the cultural barriers within our schools, yeah, yeah.
It brings a word to, to mind, ownership. So driving that ownership, I mean, it's, middle school, I think we can drive that ownership of the, their own education. If students want that independence, they need to take ownership and, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I almost see it as a, instead of the, like, the barriers, I see it as the positive. Are there any of the things that are staying away? What are the things that would come out?
Yeah.
How can it be a positive to driving strong success?
Right, right, middle school stands out as a school that's kind of made an explicit attempt to change culture. By teaching it through the advisory system, there are very clear principles that you see hanging all over the school. It's also reflecting in what teachers, what kids are taught in the morning, that gets, uh, that gets cascaded into the core, the core classes. And they also had the highest rate of student sense of belonging, particularly for African-American students.
Although, wouldn't want to look at their, the, these, this is horrible. The GPA and the number of Fs, yeah.
I, I would agree. I think rigor, and the demand of the curriculum and the pedagogy is the thing that they've also recognized as their growth area. So how, the question is, how do you leverage a strong, a nurturing culture that bids, that builds kids' sense of self, while also preparing them for the demands of the curriculum that we expect Common Core State Standards? So I, I would agree. I think they also recognize that they're trying to leverage them both, yeah.
Me and then Ed. So, on slide six, which people, first off, I, I second Mary's that, well, actually, I'll make explicit Mary's suggestion, and, and hope that she agrees with it, is that perhaps adding a fifth point on slide eleven around culture, where it's the systems and the, and et cetera, and so, that's, that's, I mean, I think that that's something that I would definitely support. On slide six, also, I think would be useful to look at updated data, because that data is from twenty-eleven, twelve, twenty-twelve, thirteen, twenty thirteen, fourteen. And I think that I'd be remiss not to mention that the grade nine Ds track almost directly one-to-one with poverty rates of those schools. I mean, it, it is, it's a straight line, and it's actually a forty-five degree angle. If you have sixty-two percent poverty, you have sixty-two percent Fs. And, and so I think that as, and, and perhaps in the context of this discussion, but also I think in the context of when we're talking about budget allocations and issues of equity, that, that's something that we need to be aware of, and, and, and not, not dismissive of. I have one question around, you mentioned Middle School Report Card Project, and can you refresh our memory on that? I, I can't remember, I, I do know that we have, I remember eight years ago when we went to standard-based report cards in middle school? And so I guess what's, what's in the works?
So, right now, we have a hybrid model at middle school, both grades and standards-based. And really Cindy and her team are just beginning an initial conversation about sort of the pros and the cons of both of those. They are not doing really deep decision-making around the middle school report card right now. What we're finding is simply getting the elementary report card out and doing it well this year has been, has been a task. And we want to do it right, and we want to really support the teachers. So this year, TJ, to your point for middle school, it is really just about getting some initial, initial ideas out there. There is not a plan to completely revamp that for next year. I would say that's a couple of years out, actually. And that's something that we'd want to align with, whatever we do with middle school model. But right now, just in terms of workload and wanting to get elementary right, we're just doing some exploration right now around middle school reporting.
Yeah, I didn't recall seeing much of anything about it, and that's why I was, is, just the way it was, it was mentioned. And then, I guess I want to kind of go back to what I said before your presentation started, and kind of build from there a little bit, is that, that this is a big project, and it, and it's, it's, our middle schools, I think as, as many people have pointed out, are something of a black hole, both in terms of our, our understanding of what's going right and wrong, and in terms of the experiences of too many of our students. And so I think that we have to take it very carefully. I kind of, it's, it's kind of interesting that, that what, before the meeting, I spoke a little bit with Lisa, and I mentioned how the West meeting on the Sippin Pathways influenced my thinking around this, after we had previously talked about it, and then Chris kind of alerted, alluded to the same kind of thing. And if I look at, I believe it's slide eleven, kind of looking at, maybe it's not slide eleven, but looking at pages, at phases three, four, and five. And I think that what came out of the Pathways meeting was Ed, in his blog, talked about communication issues. But I also think that there were some process issues that contributed to, to the communication issues. And though you have focus groups here, and you have students, and you have parent focus groups, and you have opportunities for the board to look at this, it doesn't look as, like, as open and inclusive a process as we could have. Now, I say I go back to the first thing I said, which is that if this is a plan to have a plan, maybe that's okay. But I think that perhaps at page four, it's, it steps four, five, three, four, or five, that there should be some kind of opening up to, before we even have a plan to have a plan, to have some kind of community deliberative process, some kind of, some kind of, you know, beyond, parents beyond a focus group, but parents having an opportunity to, to, to deliberate and deliberate and make formal recommendations. Perhaps, you know, a Board of Education member at that table. And because when you, I, I, I think that that's one way you can bring people in, and you can bring people into, you, you can bring people into the understanding, and you can bring people in to, 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 to the buy-in on it. And you can also draw upon their knowledge. And I think that that's perhaps, and, and you won't get the, wow, you know, we're at phase seven, and we haven't, and, and, and that hadn't been part of our thinking yet. And so, definitely when we go to, to the next steps that are beyond what's here, I, I definitely would like something like that there. For this, if we can expand in some ways, someplace in three, four, and five, and, and I don't, that, I think it would help us in the long run, and I think it's the right way to do things. And I will say one thing is that, you know, we have invited groups here. And people who are invited are in the loop, and people who might be interested and aren't invited aren't, and that includes both our staff and our, and our families. And then when, you know, one of the things at the West meeting on, on, on last week was, where did this come from? And I could give you a calendar of where it came from, but I was given updates all along the way. And so I, I, I do think that, that we have to be very, very aware of that, not only because the success in the, of, of the initiative depends on it, but I also think the quality of the initiative depends upon drawing upon the knowledge and talents of our, of our community. So, that's, that's the comment portion of my, of my, of my, of my contribution. And if you want to respond, otherwise Ed's, Ed's next in the queue.
Yeah, I, I, I do appreciate the sentiments and, and the need to be to pay close attention to the, the needs and of both our, our parents and community members, in any type of change effort. I think great or, great or small. I, I, you know, looking back and thinking about the communication plans, you know, specifically for Pathways in this specific year, you know, thinking that we were about three or four weeks off, but thinking back to the spring, the level of depth that we, depth of information and feedback from parents about that stage that we are currently in, I, I recognize that that could have been more robust. And I think for this specific journey, I think if we were kind of in this place of wanting to implement next year, you know, yes, we'd be screwed right now. We're really just kind of in the exploration and learning phase. I think this is really just, just a small piece of the pie as far as getting some feelers from a, a number of stakeholders to, to, to give us some qualitative information that I think would prepare us for a remote, robust engagement plan when we get to more stronger recommendations that would have systematic implications.
Okay, Ed and then Anna.
Excuse me, I was wondering
whether, and if so, to what extent, the, the project will be looking at extracurricular activities and even such things as middle school sports, or other ways of developing school culture and engagement.
Yeah, I think a good insight, we, we actually invited Ian, is his name, from MSCR. He's been working with our middle schools over twelve years. Just so we could have that perspective at the table, as we consider all aspects. We initially titled this presentation, the Middle School Model, but we thought it was important not to just focus on a model, a thing that we put kids and teachers into, but to think about the experiences that are impacting our adolescent learners, right? Because they start in elementary school, they don't finish till about tenth grade, eleventh grade in some instances. And so in thinking about all the experiences that speak to the development of the whole child, including the role of parents, after, before, and after school programs, both academic and extracurricular. So yes, I, I would agree, it's something that we're, we're considering in, in all the implications for what our students have access to right now.
Yeah, I would hope that that would be an area of focus when you have the student focus groups, because I think that they would really be able to shed some light on what, what it is in the middle school experience that is significant to them.
Anna?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the, the parent groups at the two middle schools of O'Keefe and Hamilton. And, and so, I understand where you're, you're kind of trying to pick a centrally-located school. My only concern is that by going to those schools, they tend to be outliers as far as district demographics for our school district. And I just am concerned that we will have greater representations from the families from those two schools and then for our schools that actually have a higher, higher rates of poverty. Are we making it difficult, more difficult for the families that may not have access to transportation and this type of stuff to get to that meeting? And so, I, I guess, I'm just curious of how you're going to check that and make sure that we don't have representation of one population over other populations that historically haven't been as well-served.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a very, very fair point. Our, our West side location actually was right, it actually just changed a couple of days ago primarily because of scheduling challenges. Because we actually thought West, Wright Middle School was more centrally-located and would attract a more diverse group. And we are also considering at least potentially two more sites in case we do not get a well-rounded group of parents to participate in this process. So, it's very much on our mind and expected that would potentially change.
One of these issues again where we, when we're asking families to come into the schools to share their input, if we have to be thinking outside of the box and think about how are we going to get families that aren't necessarily in our schools coming in to be part of this process? Because I really think those, those are really, we want to hear from those families as well. So, not to put more on Nichelle, but be thinking about how are we going to get feedback from the families that can't come to these meetings at night in different locations.
Yeah, and using virtual spaces is one. It's not, it's not ideal, but at least providing people access to both be present and ask questions and provide feedback.
Anyone else, or do we wrap up and move on? Actually, I, one thing is, when will the next board update on this be?
March 7th, I believe?
And, and that's on Instructional Work Group agenda again? Okay, so, well, Godspeed till then. Oh, James?
We're talking a lot about parental focus groups and parent involvement here. And it's always been an area of concern. And I just want to sort of support what most of the board is talking about here, that somehow we have to make sure that in March, when it's come back to the board, that we don't sit here again and talk about how we don't have the demographic representation across all the groups that we want to hear from. And so, really look at your process and make sure that, whatever your process is, that, you know, we, we do a good job of getting those silent voices that we have a hard time hearing from. And so, we, we, we have to get a little better at that. I mean, I totally agree that we have a couple of sites here. And I don't think what we're saying is that, that we, we want to be hearing from those that are associated with these sites. But I do think there are some barriers there for those that are not typically associated with those schools to come in and have their voices heard. So, somehow, we have to really think about how to, how to get those voices heard. The parent voices are so important and we just got to do a little better job of it.
Yeah, agree, agreed. I just want to also encourage you to be open-ended with, 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 with both the parents and the students. Not, you know, what do you like about this and how can it be improved, but rather, you know, open-ended, open-ended. What are your thoughts on middle school? You know, kind of, you know, give it, give it, give people space and, and, and to deliberate and, and hear and listen to each other and, and talk to us indirectly at least.
I think you'll see those reflected in the questions. I can furnish the, I can provide the board those questions for all of those stakeholder groups.
Are we ready to move, Jen?
I just want to say thank you. This is excellent feedback. Really appreciate your, getting the opportunity to hear from you early on before we've even launched the process. So, just thank you for the opportunity. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And Sylvia, and is Lisa, Lisa staying with us?
She's staying, yeah.
And this is the, we're kind of with the Instructional Work Group doing majors and minors. That was the major. And, and the minor is an update on the ELL plan, which we passed last year. And we're not even a year into implementation on it. But we do have some updates that, that I think are worth hearing, so.
Yeah, and just as a quick reminder to the board for all of our major plans, we are now on this three-year cycle. Where in the third year, we do a in-depth evaluation. And in between the launch of the plan, which as TJ mentioned, was last year at around this time. And then, we provide an annual monitoring update. And that's what tonight is all about, just giving you a quick update on implementation, a snapshot of outcomes, which is what we're going to do with each of our major plans. And, yeah, and then a few highlights on where we're going to be focusing our energy this year. So, I'll go ahead and pass it right over to Lisa and Sylvia.
So, just a quick reminder, the ELL plan that we developed last year was really structured around six major areas. Communication and monitoring systems, professional learning, our English as a Second Language Services, our bilingual services, diversity within our bilingual programs, and also, community building. And I do want to take this moment to highlight because I know she won't do it herself. Sylvia and our team in OMGE actually were asked to present at a conference, a dual-language conference in Minnesota not too long ago. And just really honored to know that their sessions were full, that they had information to share about the work that we're doing, that it is shared work across the nation, that districts are finding challenges in some of the same places that we are. And good that our team was able to represent and share some learning and learn from others as well. So, just a kudos to Sylvia and her team.
Thank you. So, what I'm going to do is to go through each section, provide you with some updates, and then pause to hear what questions you have about that section. So, the first section is about ELL communication and monitoring systems. And the highlight in that area is the implementation of an electronic database, data management system that allowed us, for the first time, to find out where we are at in relationship to the types of communications that parents of English language learners should receive around compliance-related areas. So, for example, the implementation of individual plans of services, IPS forms that we know them as. This is the first time we've been able to, to hear how many parents have received them and to be able to track them. So, it was very important in terms of the communication that parents receive. We know that we have a baseline now of about an eighty percent of all individual IPS forms have been archived. And that will allow us to set targets for improvement for following years. The second highlight for this area is that in collaboration with the Family, Youth, and Community Engagement Department, we have offered training and professional development for parents, community leaders, and school-based staff around implementing the MALDOF curriculum known as Parent-School Partnership Curriculum. While this curriculum has been offered at different sites for several years, this is the first time that we're offering it in languages other than Spanish and English because we are offering it for families of immigrant and refugee students in the district. So, Arabic, Nepali, Hmong, and Mandinka. So, we're very excited. As a matter of fact, this last weekend, we have an additional meeting with parents that want to become those leaders at each of their sites. So, that's the first section. Any questions connected to that?
Michael?
I'm drawing a blank right now. Was there any grant that had come up with that?
No, we are using Title III funds for that. But in the past, we've also received, we have received immigrant and refugee grants by the Department of Public Instruction that we have used for parent involvement. But this particular professional development has been funded through Title III funds.
Okay, so, so for, right now, it's not a finite, it's not a finite grant that we were, we had. Excellent, and, okay.
Thank you. Anna?
One comment I heard about the MALDOF training, which I think is great, is that some parents were concerned that perhaps French would be another one because there are quite a few people, I understand, coming from West African.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, they were saying not so much the Mandinka, but that the French would be important too.
Great, excellent feedback. We can expand that to other languages. Okay, so, the next section is around professional learning and building system capacity. We ended up, last year, the fifteen, sixteen school year, by offering and organizing the first Summer Teaching and Learning Institute. We had approximately two hundred and fifty school-based and central office staff that participated in this two-day institute. Our keynote speaker was very well-received as well as the many breakout sessions. And it was very well-ranked overall. We have a four-point-five over five-point evaluation of the institute.
And we got some feedback. We held the institute at Edgewood College. And the educators at Edgewood asked if they could take part in it, actually, and so did some other districts. So, we earned quite a reputation with that and we're moving into the next Teaching and Learning Institute around special education. So, I think we learned a lot and Sylvia and her team worked really hard and got some really excellent feedback and a lot of respect for our district in putting forth something of that size.
The next area, if you recall, this was an important area in the plan, was the tuition reimbursement program. We currently have forty-two staff members taking advantage of this program. So, this means this staff are enrolled in ESL or Bilingual Education Licenseure Programs and participating in the tuition reimbursement. This helps us build capacity across our sites, especially in the general education environment, so that students can receive language, content, and cultural attentive supports in an inclusive manner. Then the last part, yeah?
Is that reimbursed as you go or reimbursement upon completion?
So, it's reimbursement upon completion of courses, yes.
Of cour-, of course, not certification.
Of courses.
Of courses.
So, as they, as teachers, and teachers usually wait to submit once a year after they've submitted, you know, say, or they've completed two or three courses. And they usually submit for reimbursement and then they can enroll in the next set of courses. And then, the next one was in response to a question about emergency and permit status. Because ESL and bilingual education licenses are add-on licenses, the vast majority of our new hires do not hold both a general ed license and an ESL license at the same time. Usually, our staff have to go back and enroll in programming, in programs in order to get that add-on license. For the last couple of years, we looked at the numbers and we, we have approximately the same number of teachers that were on emergency or permits from year to year. So, we know that our teachers are finishing up and completing the programs, but there is also some level of attrition, movement either within the district and sometimes outside of the district. And the reasons can be many, but that means that we are still staying approximately at the same levels of staff being on emergency and permit licenses.
Michael?
So, is there anything you've identified that we can do to facilitate that opportunity for our teachers so we don't have that revolving door?
So, I think on one hand, the opportunities have broadened for bilingual teachers because we have opened new programs. For example, we've opened a program at Schenck and Frank Alice. And so, sometime, and as we go implement up in higher-grade levels, sometimes teachers feel like there may be an opportunity closer to their home. And so, they perhaps transfer internally from one site to another. Or as teachers become fully certified, sometimes they transition from a BRT position, which is a support position, into a classroom position. So, those are some of the changes that account for that internal movement. And sometimes also, teachers move into leadership positions, you know, which then leave other positions vacant.
Anna?
So, some of it is sort of a natural movement. And sometimes teachers do leave the district. We know, for example, some of the surrounding school districts do recruit everywhere because of the shortage of bilingual teachers. And sometimes due to personal reasons, teachers move out of, of the state. And within this subgroup of teachers, we feel every time any of them have to move out of state.
My question was, what is the difference, or what certifications do you need to move from a bilingual resource teacher to a DLI teacher? What would be the difference?
So, the certifications are the same, so general ed or content area license plus a bilingual education license. The difference is in the level of proficiency in the language. Because DLI teachers have to instruct in Spanish, through Spanish, and they do literacy and biliteracy in math and all the other content areas, the level of proficiency in Spanish has to be higher than if you're supporting in a class through the first language or in a school where there isn't a bilingual program.
So, one recommendation, and maybe this is something to think about because I know how difficult it is to get DLI teachers, is that if we could offer some sort of reimbursement for our BRSs, or our BRTs, I should say, to be taking language courses so that they can develop that higher level of proficiency? Because we do have quite a few BRTs that could easily transition to DLI. They would be, you know, so anyways, it was just an idea that I was thinking about. If we're doing reimbursement, maybe we need to offer language classes.
Jen, and then James?
Thank you. I was just going to chime in on Michael's question and Sylvia's emphasis on our need to pay close attention to attrition. The board will be receiving our annual HR report later this month. And I was reviewing it over the weekend, Sylvia and I talked about this earlier today. And it's interesting when it comes to your point about the kind of turnstile of teachers, one of our kind of key pain points is losing Latino teachers, many of whom, I'm assuming, are teachers that are bilingual. And it, I, I think it's something that, now that we've gotten this new data, we're going to have to take a fresh look at, at the reasons people are leaving. I agree with Sylvia that it's complex, but we need to unpack it.
Yes.
Because as we're investing so much in getting teachers into our district and prepared to teach our students, we can't afford to be losing them at the same rate. So, just want to emphasize that that'll be something that you'll see us focusing on in the near future.
James?
Yeah, I'm sort of concerned about the attrition aspect of this training. I mean, this is not a new concept. A lot of organizations and companies do this. And some organizations require upfront that if you're going to take the training, then you have to obligate a certain amount of years of service to us. So, I mean, are you looking at any procedures like that, for example? I mean, I don't think it's a good idea for us to pay for these folks to get trained and they go elsewhere.
Yes.
And so, are we looking at anything that could help with this attrition? Like I say, a lot of companies say, hey, you know, you got to work for us for three or four, five years if you take this money. And so, that's, that's not a new concept.
Yeah, the tuition reimbursement program does stipulate three years of working for the school district after the completion of a license.
So, the attrition you're talking about is after the three years?
Uh huh, yes. Or teachers who are not participating necessarily in the tuition reimbursement program, yeah. Yeah, I think we do need to examine issues of culture within each of the schools, the level of support, the size of the program. If a program is small, teachers tend to feel more isolated compared to... more isolated, um, compared to a bigger program.
To Sylvia's earlier point, uh, just wanna emphasize the fact that these are, these add-on credentials, so the fact that we've got teachers who are having to, in addition to teaching full-time, um, uh, go back to school, essentially, and take on more coursework, right? I think that, that leads to, um, the potential for burnout, and I, I think there's some funda- fundamental issues at play about how licensure happens.
Right.
Which, um, is a whole other territory that we wanna talk with DPI more about.
I just wanna clarify, I don't know currently, but I do know that last year at least, we had, um, at least a couple and maybe more teachers whose only permits were emergency, who were, who were working in bilingual, and they didn't have a general teaching that they were adding to, their, their general teaching was emergency, and their bilingual was emergency.
Yeah.
And, and, and I know at least one of them is no longer with our district, and, and, but, you know, and, and for certain, I have no idea, the circumstances on that, but, um, but, so, so we have kind of like, we have different levels of people, I guess, is what I'm trying to say here. We have people with general teaching who are going for add-ons, we have people who have bilingual skills who are going for general teaching.
Right.
We, and, and pro, and some, it's a lot of different combinations going on.
Right, exactly.
Michael?
And I also wanna underscore that point, because, uh, kinda getting around and, and into the district and talking to, uh, bilingual teachers or ELL teachers, th- there is, we need to reinforce that support and reinforce the, the big picture of the district, that even though they, they may be here or there, that they're part of the, a big group of, or the DLI or NELL, and, and really connect them, uh, you know, I mean...
Yes.
Our, our new MONG DLI is going to need that support too, you know, uh, so the experience of teachers that have been through those phases and that separation will translate, uh, into the obstacles that, uh, the new DLI will face, and, um, I think we really need to drive that team con- connection.
Yes.
So, i- if we can do anything to, to really build the fa- that family, you know, i- and, yeah, and it happens also with the mainstream, uh, educational system too, so if we can engulf... Yeah, it's not, uh, it's not a competition, it's for the benefit of students, and everybody has their, their specific niche that they can, uh, benefit that they can give to each one of our students.
Yeah.
You know?
Absolutely, yes. For the next section, uh, around English lang-, um, English as a Second Language Services, there are two main highlights I wanted to share with you. We continue to receive very positive feedback for our professional development around Project GLAD, GLAD means Guided Language Acquisition Design. We had six schools participate last year, um, all of those schools applied and agreed to certain conditions in terms of professional development and support, um, and then we had six new schools particip- applying and participating this school year, and you can see the list there, Leopold, Lakeview, Midvale, Hawthorne, Stevenson, Kennedy. We continue to get very positive feedback around that. And then the other area to highlight is, uh, within the K-5 report card, the elementary level report card, for the first time, we're going to be able to provide to parents, um, feedback and information around how students are doing with their English language development growth. Parents have told us in the past that the once-a-year report that they get from the results of what we call the access test for ELLs, which is a test that English language learners have to take every year, it's not enough for them to know where they're at in their performance and growth in their English language development. So the new report card will include a section, uh, where teachers will collect information and evidence on a formative, ongoing basis, that will be able to help them, um, on a more timely basis, know what are the next, um, learning, uh, steps for students, and to report that growth to parents. Any questions about that?
Yeah.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but Lake, Lakeview is listed twice, what are the teachers at Lakeview?
Yes, yes, so Lakeview is also the site where we're going to implement our MONG English, bilingual program, so we, they applied twice, and we wanted to honor the fact that they will be going through a major change, and that Project GLAD will increase the capacity of the entire staff to really understand the needs of second language learners, and so this played, um, a, a critical piece of continuation of that learning that they had started the previous year. Okay, so for the next section, bilingual, uh, education services, so in addition to the ELD or English Language Development Growth, for schools that offer bilingual programs, the K-5 report card will also offer information around this Spanish language proficiency growth. Again, this is the first time ever, and it's something that we've been wanting to do for many years, and we're so glad to be able to offer this to parents. Parents now will be able to know how are the students growing, um, students who are in bilingual programs, both developmental bilingual and DLI programs, how are their students moving and improving in their Spanish language proficiency skills. So in the same way as ELD, teachers will be able to collect information on a formative, ongoing basis that informs their teaching and also informs parents.
Last year when we had the, the, the plan for the plan, uh, some of the data, there was inconsistency in the, in, in, in the, um, access testing schedules and things like that, and I guess kind of an update on, on, has anything changed with that? There was, that, that, you know, that students weren't being, weren't being tested regularly, or were being tested at, at different times, especially when we, when we were looking at, at changes around the long-term di- I remember particularly from the, from the data around the long-term ELL students, that there was a footnote about inconsistent administration.
Yeah.
And so, has there been, and since you brought up access in this context, I...
Yes, yes, so, interesting, because, uh, uh, one of the next steps, um, so two things about the access test is, we do still, we do meet the required ninety-five percent, um, of participation in the test, so that's, uh, very good. But what we had was a move from a pa- paper and pencil test to an, um, online electronic test, which has given us new, uh, baseline data, uh, and among the new findings in the data was that, uh, six hundred more students exited compared to the previous year, so there's an increase, and you'll see, yeah, and you'll see that in the, uh, monitoring snapshot data report, that i- it, it only compares two years, but if we had more years, you would have seen that, um, let me see, where is that data?
It's moved to level six, it's on...
Right, yes, exactly, and, and so students moving to level six, you will see that nineteen percent, and in previous years it would have been nineteen percent, nineteen percent, and now it's twenty-six percent, and so, it's, uh, we believe it's new, a new baseline of data and how students are, the performance is evaluated in the test, so that's an area to... All right, um, remembering the plan, we, I, we approved the implementation of two new programs at Schenck Elementary and Frank Alice Elementary, and those have moved forward very well, we have two sections at the kindergarten level, and we're, uh, the planning is underway for Falk Elementary and Jefferson Middle School, which will receive a middle school ongoing, um, programming for Chavez and Stevens Elementary. And then we have started the planning, we hired our new, um, planner for our MONG bilingual program.
Pause there with Jefferson, is it only from Chavez that they're, and...
And Stevens.
And Stevens, and Stevens, and, and Stevens has the, the, yeah, and, and, ooh, Stevens has, what were like, what's the eighth grade class of the DBE at Stevens?
Yeah, it's about, uh, it's one section of a class, so between ten, fifteen students.
And so, we're talking probably something in the range of thirty, thirty-five students at, at Jefferson.
Mm-hmm.
And so there'll be some challenges around scheduling, some challenges around isolation, and some...
But they will be joining the Chavez.
The Chavez, but, but Chavez is twenty-five, thirty students in, in fifth grade, I believe.
Uh, I think it's about twenty students.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, it's, it's gonna be a very small number in a very large school.
Yeah.
It's, 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 um...
Yes, yes. And, um, so the MONG program, we hired our MONG, uh, bilingual program planner, and we have started, um, curriculum planning, um, school visits to different programs in the state and in other states, we have been to Minnesota, visiting, um, a school that does a biliteracy for MONG programs, as well as the MONG Peace Academy in Milwaukee, um, and we have also started our first guiding coalition meeting, and it was very well attended with approximately forty members in attendance, members representing the community at large, parents, teachers, uh, some professors from both the UW Madison and UW Whitewater and Edgewood College, um, so we had a lot of very good feedback in that first meeting. Any questions about that? No? Okay. Professional development, last year we held, for the first time, we, we were able to bring together on a quarterly basis, teachers from across all of our, um, DLI programs, DLI and DBE programs, and they came together to learn about, uh, immersion pedagogy and do planning. We had done our first steps in, um, implementing our biliteracy scopes. This year, we have moved to a setup that resembles exactly the professional development that intensive schools receive, and we also do this for kindergarten through eighth grade, uh, teachers that serve in DLI and DBE programs. We have also received very good, positive feedback around both the professional development and the lab days, where teachers are able to see modeling, um, themselves, do the teaching and receive feedback, and, uh, and we do that, uh, each of those lab days is tailored to each school, individual school. We've also, um, started this year, the implementation, the shift to the fifty-fifty model, starting with the, this year's co- uh, kindergarten cohort. We have updated our biliteracy scopes to reflect that change, as well as provided professional development, both within the school day, as well as Saturday professional development opportunities, as well as responding to several, uh, requests for support that our schools have, uh, sent our way. And as with any significant shift, uh, we are taking each of these changes in strides and going, really supporting each school individually, um, because we know how important it is to maintain integrity of, of implementation as we move along. That's it for that section, what questions do you have about this section? Okay, the next section is about diversity within bilingual programs, and for that, we'll go over, uh, there are, um, reports that have been included, there's a report, um, that, uh, addresses the demographics in both DLI and non-DLI sections in schools that have DLI programs, and we included a report for all grades, and then one for the kindergarten cohort, so you could see some emerging trends, um, in, and the difference between the overall versus the most recent cohort. And then the community building section refers to, uh, the highlights for that area are, we provided half-day sessions for principals last spring to explore solutions around student placement, instructional services, community building across strands, and allocation and staffing solutions. We acknowledge that it continues to be something that schools are working on, and that, um, we are working to find creative solutions to these challenges. Finally...
James?
Yeah?
Back to the, uh, diversity within bilingual programs, like you, you stated, sort of, these reports listed below here, in the community building, that had the, uh, updates as to where we are with, with that.
Yep, after I'm done with this section, we'll go over some of the themes in the data, and we can, or we, or I can do it now, if you prefer.
However you wanna do it's fine, as, as long as we touch on it.
Yeah.
I'll also point out that this is twenty fifteen, sixteen data, and we should have twenty sixteen, seventeen, um, particularly, you know, in the kindergarten, I mean, you know, other programs change slowly, but the kindergarten should be where, and, and so we appreciate an update with that in the near future.
Yes, mhm, yes.
Excuse me?
When the plan approved, this cohort had already...
Oh, had already enrolled, had already enrolled, yeah.
Right, yes.
So, um, yeah.
And so as, uh, as, as, one of the strategies that we had in terms of, um, addressing the, both the diversity within bilingual programs and community building, was from central office, we did, um, organize and offer informational sessions, of twenty informational sessions at Headstarts and community-based preschools, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to revise and review our materials for the upcoming year in terms of, we're developing a new video, new, um, brochures, uh, and newspaper ads, so the community's aware of, um, this opportunity. Any questions before we go into the main themes of the two reports, data reports?
I guess, uh, the reason I highlighted the Jefferson is because this does present a huge challenge, when you have, um, cohorts of twenty-five or thirty students, or, you know, in a school of, what's Jefferson in the five-hundred range?
Mm-hmm.
And, that's gonna max out at about ninety, less than a hundred students out of five-hundred, and the isolation and community building and crossing those bridges, um, presents unique challenges, and challenges that are at least a little different than what we've dealt with at Senate and Cherokee so far, because there's at least some kind of balance between the two. They're, they're closer in, in the non-DLI track and the DLI track are closer in, in total size and percentage of school, and so I guess that, um, as we go into going into Jefferson, I think that, you know, that we do have to be, uh, the potential for isolation and the potential for bullying of the DLI program and, and things like that, some of the things that were, that previously experienced at, at Alice when Restor Mundo was, was, was there, um, I, I really think that, that, that...
Yeah.
That the challenges are unique to, 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 um...
Yes.
Some of the challenges are unique, some of them are the same ones we're seeing in all our schools with, with two tracks.
Yeah, yeah, it is a challenge, because, uh, Jefferson is going to be fed by two small programs.
Yes.
At both Chavez and Stevens, um, that will join, and we're hoping that it'll be a little bit greater presence, but it is within a larger, possibly large school as well.
I guess we're gonna, and we have an East Area school that in a couple of years will be, will have a, will have...
Yeah, Falk will also be able to...
We'll have Sandberg and, and whereas Senate gets fed by...
Restor Mundo and Glendale.
And, and now Alice, um, and, and, and Cherokee gets fed by Midvale Lincoln and, and Leopold.
Two large programs.
Yes, so I guess that's what I'm trying to highlight here.
Yes, very much, mhm, yes.
The, the, the one thing, TJ, though, I think it's similar to ELL, I mean, the numbers of, uh, students that are at Jefferson that are ELL, it's small in comparison, so, so I mean, it's nothing that the students really haven't faced, um, a- at least, uh, the Spanish speakers or MONG speakers coming into, into, uh, uh, English-speaking, uh, area.
Yeah, yeah, the point is very well taken in terms of both, you know, the retention of teachers, and of course, the community building for the students within the school, yes. So the next section is about the two data reports, the first one is the English Language Learner Monitoring Review, um, for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, I did con- and it contains sort of a comparison of the last two school years, fourteen-15 and then 15-16. So some themes that you will observe there is that the enrollment of ELLs district-wide continues to increase. It's small, but it has been steady, in this case of one percent, going from twenty-six percent to twenty-seven percent. Spanish and MONG continue to be the two top languages in the district. As I mentioned earlier, there was an increase in the number of students who have been reclassified to the ELP Level Six, and we think it's because of the new CAT scores due to a new online format for the test. Also, the breakdown, demographic breakdown for the ELL students, the student demographic has stayed uniform in the last two years, but you can see an increase of a one percent of students who qualify for special education services. Also, participation in world languages has increased by three percent, from forty-three percent to forty-six percent. We think that there might be some influence from the language arts classes that are offered at the high school level that are part of the DLI program, and so by design, more English language learners are enrolling in world language courses due to that. You can also see that out-of-school suspensions have increased from one hundred and thirty-seven to one hundred and eighty, but on the other hand, chronic absenteeism has decreased slightly from seventeen to sixteen percent. That's one of the reports.
You mentioned about world language, and in the, reviewed the initial draft of the Rite Charter renewal, and one of the things that was called out in that, and I'm asking you because you have some expertise here, and you probably won't be at the table when we look at that, was the lack of access for ELL students to world language. And I guess, what I don't have a good idea is how Rite compares to other middle schools in that, that are, particularly are Spanish speaking, but are other ELL students accessing world languages at higher rates at some middle schools than others?
Yes.
And if you could kind of go into this a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's an area that we have been looking at, and we want to work with schools to establish goals for next year. We have a report that, and we will be visiting with each principal. Yes, different schools do have different levels of participation in world languages for their student body overall, and certainly for several, for the different subgroups. And we would like for schools to establish goals of how to improve that access. Where it becomes really an equity issue is that if you do have two years of consistent enrollment of world languages, you're able to skip the Level One of a world language course at the high school level, which in turns allows you to access higher-level courses. So it is important that we work with schools to find ways to increase the enrollment in world languages.
I might follow up with you on that in private.
Yes.
And just one more, one more thing before Sylvia moves on to the next data report. Worked really hard with Andrew and Bowen and his team to put together what we thought would be a useful snapshot in the update in the monitoring year, so hopefully as we follow through with our routine of updates for you, now that the major plans have been written, that you will see something similar to this, kind of a one-pager that will go with the update.
Okay. Any questions about that report?
Michael?
Yeah?
Can I trouble you, and you don't have to bring it up, but I would like to see a little more data on this out-of-school suspensions, and I'm just curious to whether there's a theme that might have created a negative situation for our ELL students that were, they might be just lashing out due to
Okay.
other negative issues out there.
I just, I wanted to chime in on that really quickly, Michael, because just as a reminder, out-of-school suspensions dropped dramatically that first year of implementing the behavior plan, and then for a variety of reasons, with some being that I think that there were some misconceptions only first, in that first year, that may have prevented some out-of-school suspensions from occurring that actually should have occurred. And then this past year, we saw a slight increase, not back to the previous amount, no we're close, but we still saw an uptick across the district. And when I saw this number, I assumed it was reflective of the uptick that we saw across many student groups, so we'll be, we'll make sure to look into it, to understand it. But that reflects the general trend that we saw in this past year district-wide.
My concern is it's just reflecting upon negative rhetoric that exists
Right.
right now and out there.
Mm-hmm.
So, so then I feel that it's our role to protect our students so that does not weigh on their shoulders,
Yep.
you know, the adult world.
Yeah.
So.
I think that's right. I think this is reflective of our practice, as opposed to the students.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Anna?
Is this the time to add questions without data?
Yes.
Okay. And then Jayce, did you have, were you gonna ask them all?
Oh, maybe.
Okay.
I just wanted to go, I was interested, you mentioned that there were strategies that you were implementing around the issue, because I know there's, it sounds like there's been a slight increase in our kindergarten in this year perhaps, but at our district, from this data, it looks like it's been pretty flat, especially for African-American students. There's been a little bit of growth for students with disabilities. So you mentioned you had twenty information sessions.
Mm-hmm.
What other strategies have you all been using?
Mm-hmm. So each school has been very active in reaching out to families individually and personally. So that has been very effective. One school, for example, after the results of the lottery, noticed that the kids, the next three students in, that were in the waiting list, had self-identified as African-American. And so the school asked if they could, for example, increase the, accept a few more students so that we could take advantage of that. So schools are becoming really adept and intentional about connecting with families, working with their family liaisons to reach out to different families.
And then my other, so that's helpful to know, and the reason I ask is because I've been to a cou-, I've been to a couple outreach just around this, and I know in those sessions, there's a lot of talking about why this is a benefit to you and your child and that, but I want to know, have we gone out to families and asked them, what are the challenges and what are the reasons you're not wanting to, versus us telling you why it's good for them? Are we asking them why they're choosing or not wanting to enroll in the program and trying to address maybe some of those barriers?
Mm-hmm. I think we, we did a lot during the ELL plan. I think we can do additional sessions this year as well. I think a big part of it is that even when families do apply because of the lottery, some people get in and some people don't. But the more people apply, the pool of applicants, when we, when we increase the pool of applicants, that's when the chances of getting in improve. So I think in general, you can see that different schools, if you look at the breakdown of each school, it also depends on each school's demographic itself. So some schools that are seeing improvements may have done more outreach to, but the demographic itself lends itself to more applicants. So I think that there, you know, we can continue to work with families and address why families may not be applying.
Michael?
Again, I wanted to piggyback on Anna's point with our students of different abilities. Do we have the tablets and software that support a DLI education for kids that utilize them? Do we have?
So you mean if students need, students with disabilities that might need support? Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all of the services of special education for students that are admitted to the program have to be provided.
So that is not a barrier for students?
No, no. In the case of special education, sometimes the IEP teams decide ahead of time whether the, and that is part of their prerogative to whether the, the learning environment in DLI is appropriate, conducive. In general, we encourage parents and IP teams to consider DLI settings as viable for, you know, all learners. But ultimately, the IP team very often makes that decision. So some other themes that we found was that district-wide, the Hispanic-Latino subgroup is the largest participant in DLI sections, and the white subgroup is the largest participant in non-DLI sections. And the same pattern you can see in both the all grades and the kindergarten report. We saw that in general, there is a trend towards decreasing, decreases in the enrollment in DLI of the white student subgroup, and then there are higher percentages of white students enrolled in the non-DLI sections. We also saw the multiracial category of students has stayed uniformed in the all grades report, but there was a slight decrease of one percent in the kindergarten cohort. And then while the average of a black or African-American student subgroup has had a slight increase, some schools have experienced more growth. If you can see, the Glendale report shows an increase from four percent to seven percent in the all grades, and then Leopold from six to nine percent for the kindergarten cohort. And I do believe that as we move on, we will be continuing to see it, that kindergarten cohort, we're going to be seeing improvements. Okay, so the last sections are implications and next steps. So as I mentioned earlier, in addition to tuition reimbursement for ESL licenses, we want to support additional bilingual candidates to be able to participate in the Grow Your Own program that the district offers to be able to pursue bilingual education licenses. We do need to continue to focus on services for ELLs at the secondary level with that eye on special attention to long-term ELLs, and how we can support students to prevent becoming a long-term ELL. We need to collaborate with a personalized pathways team to ensure access to services and programming for ELLs within the pathways. We do need to do an internal analysis of the alignment of the services that our bilingual counselors are providing, prioritizing the needs of ELLs, both within the pathways and outside of the pathways. We want to continue to expand professional development opportunities to our secondary staff, and we're hoping to find a way to do school-wide PD, just like we do for GLAD at the elementary school level. We want to continue our involvement in a long-range facility study to be able to inform the development of future programming options, explore our department's reorganization to include potential LEED ESL-BERT positions at each school, within the allocation that we currently have at each school, and really define and finalize program evaluation parameters for our three-year evaluation plan, evaluation of both the plan and our programs. And finally, continue to hone in into our strategies for support for schools to reach out to families, especially of underrepresented demographic subgroups in our programs.
Add to that list also working with the middle school team, because
Yes.
and, and that's there. And realizing that this is a monitoring year and not an evaluation year, but some kind of presentation around that change in Level Six on the access test, some kind of presentation around long-term ELLs and, and, I mean, I think that, that for many of us, that was the most compelling stuff from
Yeah.
the pre-planned data.
Yes.
And, and to see, to have that part of the monitoring, what's going on with long-term ELLs would be helpful.
Yes.
Michael?
And one more thing, also really reinforce our advanced learner with, learners within the ELL and E, uh, DLI.
Yeah.
I know that's, we can use a little extra help there.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Anna?
Yeah, sorry. One other question I had quickly was about, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot what my question was, but I did have one suggestion.
You can send it to-
Something you said, Michael, but then now it's like on.
Yeah.
It's late. One thing that was discussed many, many years ago, particularly, I know this was an issue at Midville, that when there was the idea of piloting this DLI program and bringing it out, that some teachers there felt that, and this has come up in a couple of presentations, that more families moved towards that program, particularly white families within the neighborhood, because they perceived it as having some added value. And I think this was mentioned in the Montessori charter as well, that there's an added value to this program for families. Has there ever been any consideration, particularly in our schools that have more robust programs, to create in, rather than having a DLI and a non-DLI strand, actually having some other, whether it's a STEM focus, a technology focus,
Yes.
arts focus, that would then create the added value to the other strands?
Yes.
So we're not sitting with a school where some families are saying, oh, but there's value added here, or you can just have whatever. I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion or-
Mm-hmm, yes, we're working with different schools around that. The most recent conversation with Cherokee Middle School, you know, they're thinking about what is that value added for the non-DLI section as well. And schools have explored that over the years. Sandberg looked into technology, and Leopold had, because they're also a pilot for world languages, for teachers getting their student teaching at the elementary level, really continuing to strengthen that aspect within the non-DLI strand, yes. Anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for Jen?
I just wanted to, as I normally do, take the opportunity to thank Sylvia, her team, many of whom are on the perimeter tonight. I personally think it's exciting to see this short and sweet little update. There is a lot packed in here, there's a lot they've accomplished in one year. I know the board, when we, when you approve the plan, really pushed the team on high-quality implementation and support for teachers. And I, I see evidence that they're making good on that promise. So just wanted to congratulate you on the progress so far.
Thank you.
And thanks, TJ.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, second, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Seven, nothing. Good night.